I call the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Kickapoo, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and great Sioux Nation people. Please rise and join me in saying the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will call, please.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Cogginian.
Yeah.
Councilmember Homa. Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Maddox. Councilmember Corral.
Here.
That a mayor, a quorum is present.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Page?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Can I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Maddox?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Brandon Maddox of Sabroso, Pocahontas, Mexicana, located at twenty-seven, twenty-sixth Sutton Boulevard for a full and Sunday liberal license.
At this time, the public is welcome to provide comments. If you are joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand and Mr. Knapper will call upon you. If you're joining us in the chambers, please step to the podium.
Mayor Knapper, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eight.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to provide comment. You're joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand. Mr. Knapper will call upon you. You're joining us in the chamber, please step to the podium.
Mayor Knapper, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number nine.
Announcements.
We got a bunch of things going on. The twenty-sixth on this week, we have the Great Pumpkin Flow. It's the first time we're having this event downtown at the Manchester, so we should all go enjoy it. This weekend, ten twenty-eight is the DEA National Prescription Drug Take Back Day event, where I believe at the police department, you can drop off medications that you no longer need to be responsibly disposed of. November fourth, we have the Doggy Drag Show at CNB Bank Park. And coming up soon after Thanksgiving on the twenty-fifth, the Small Business Saturday.
Awesome. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number ten.
Approval of the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the council meeting minutes. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eleven.
Traffic calming study presentation by Lee Cannon of CB.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Lee Cannon. I'm a traffic engineer with CBB with offices in St. Louis County at twelve four hundred Olive. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief presentation on a significant traffic calming study that we completed for the city. This process started back in two thousand twenty-two. We held extensive open house and data collection efforts to get the public's input on this process. And we're just wrapping it up now. I believe you have a copy of the report. I'm going to hit some of the high points this evening through this presentation. So I'm very familiar with Maplewood. I've been in the St. Louis area for about thirty years. I actually worked, one of my first projects of my own was the Phase One Manchester Road project where we revised Manchester Road, took out the always stops and put the traffic signals in the central business district. And I'm happy to see that that area is, you know, it's basically very vibrant now, revitalized with those improvements that we've helped the city to put in. As an overview, I'm going to touch on the public input process, talk about the data that we collected to vet the input that we received from the public, talk about how we prioritize the different streets into tiers, and then discuss some of the recommendations and the action plan. So as part of the public process, people were asked through online surveys and open house, what are your concerns with traffic flow on the streets of Maplewood? Primarily talking about the local streets, but it also included the county routes, you know, Big Bend Manchester Road, the primary arterial through the middle of town. Those range from speeding to cut-through volumes, noncompliance with stop signs and other controls, some bike and ped issues. There was spread across the city of concerns that were brought up in different locales. And we looked at each one of those through the process. Ultimately, one of the issues that came up was the speeds and how compliant people were with the roadways, posted speed limits. So we looked at about twenty road segments. They had various posted speeds. And as traffic engineers, we generally look at this eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is the little column out of the five on the right. And we want to see a majority of people driving on the roads going the posted speed limit. And we would expect that to be true. And we did find that there were some of the roadways where there was excessive speeding. There generally always are some outliers. And this graphic shows the frequency from left to right, where the wider the line, the more the frequency. People driving five mile and over, five miles per hour over the speed limit, or ten or twenty miles over the speed limit. It's somewhat hard to believe that somebody might go forty-five miles an hour down a twenty mile per hour local street, but it is happening. It's not happening on all the streets, but it's happening on some. So we decided to break the, in discussion with the city staff, decided to break these into four different tiers. Tier one, two, and three, which have a high, medium, and low amount of speeding, and then the generally compliant streets where the speeds for ninety-fifth percentile, most people were going within five mile per hour of the speed limit. And from that, we came up with these prioritizations. We have two roads in the tier one, West Bruno and Rannells, where eighty-fifth percentile speeds are quite high, over ten miles per hour higher than the posted speed limit. Tier two, Lindo over in Sutton, north of Flora, where the ninety-fifth percentile speeds are over ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit. And then the tier threes, where the ninety-fifth percentiles are over five miles per hour over the speed limit. So with traffic calming, and that's kind of the way that traffic engineers address these speed and volume issues, we have the four E's. Engineering, which is what I do generally, education, which is, you know, promoting the expected behaviors and encouraging people to do the right thing. And then enforcement, which is what the police department does for those bad actors that we can't, you know, engineer and educate. We have to address that sparingly though, because there's only so much resources for that kind of activity. So we try to look for the worst offenders and the worst issues. And then we like to go back and evaluate to make sure that if we did something different, is it working? Because, you know, we might as well be getting a benefit from any type of input. On West Bruno, you know, it's one of those roads that it kind of has a a lot of difficulties. The fact that there's major commercial businesses on that road, and there's also homes that front it. Some people like to say it's a residential street, and others use it to get to the Walmart. And it has a very low posted speed limit. It's also a road where Maplewood owns the south half, and Richmond Heights owns the north half, and anything that could be done to that road, you know, would need coordination with Richmond Heights. And Manchester Road is another one where, you know, there's a balance needed of through vehicle mobility and pedestrian bike safety, and, you know, just generally the commerce that's happening there, that's probably the the number one area where you have people not in cars, interacting with people in cars. The other one would probably be Big Bend, north of Manchester, and in the vicinity of the Richmond Heights School. So generally speaking, the overall recommendations for the generally compliant routes, you don't have to really do anything to those routes, but you may want to consider as maintenance activities occur to have high-visibility crosswalks to replace existing ones, again, when you go in to repaint them. And also shared lane markings, the bicycle and arrow, we call them a shero on the roadway, where that's intended. For the tier three routes, we talk about some abilities to do some horizontal restrictions in width, bump outs, pinch points, and other things that make the road more narrow in certain spots. And again, we're trying to reduce the comfort of people that are traveling down the road so that they slow down. Generally speaking, the posted speed limit means not a lot to most folks. You kind of drive how you feel comfortable. The less comfortable you feel, the more you tend to slow down. With the caveat that if there is a, if there's a penalty, you get a traffic ticket, you're more likely to to slow down, but those are temporary. When the heavy enforcement goes away or has to go do something else over time, then the speeds tend to go back up. Also restrictions in width can be done with some median islands. And in certain spaces, median islands can also help reduce crossing width for pedestrians. So the pedestrian can cross one lane of traffic to get to the middle, and they can cross the other lane of traffic to cross the street, provide some refuge in some locations that may be wider than necessary for the vehicle travel. We also talked about traffic circles, speed humps, and high-visibility crosswalks on the tier three routes. We'd like to make a differentiation between a speed hump and a speed bump. You see speed bumps in parking lots. They might be twelve, sixteen inches in width along the distance that the car travels. Speed humps are generally ten to fourteen feet wide. And the speed bumps, the faster you go, the less you notice them, because your suspension just kind of accepts them. The speed hump provides kind of an uneasy feeling and generally gets somebody's attention. With the tier two routes, some of the initial concepts, and those are Lindo and Sutton, south of Manchester. Talked about putting in chicanes. These are physical barriers that require vehicles to make horizontal movements, which slows down the traffic. There's also only space for one vehicle to go at a time. And so there's some courtesy gaps that are required. These are primarily low-volume streets, so that could occur. So if you're approaching a vehicle in the opposite direction, you may have to slow down or yield to let that other vehicle come by, unless they do that first. I live on a street that's twenty-six feet wide out in the county, and we have a decent prevalence of single-lane driveways. So a lot of folks parking on the street, and that's what you have to do when you have somebody parked on the street, and it's twenty-six feet wide. You have to kind of take a turn. So these will be kind of artificial installations to simulate that. Also, talked about the potential to prohibit trucks turning north from Schnucks, because there's really no need for those trucks to go there. But we did witness some of those trucks turning to the north, coming in from the north. We really want those to be oriented towards to and from Manchester Road. So there's some drawing, illustrate some examples, not specifically plans, for some of these types of items within the report. On Sutton, very similar recommendations. We talked about a raised intersection, which is effectively a intersection-wide speed hump, where you raise the entire intersection as a platform, so you come up onto it and down on the far side. That can actually be a benefit where you have a lot of pedestrians, because the pedestrians cross at the high level on top of the raised intersection. With the tier one routes, that's Rannells and West Bruno, these are really the ones that have the highest differential between posted speed and actual speed data that we collected. For Rannells, we talked about selecting one of the three options for chicanes, allowing parking on both sides and raising the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour, which may seem counterintuitive, but when you have roadways that provide a functional benefit to more than just the local residents, having an appropriate speed limit based on how it's being used is also important. We could raise the, we could lower the speed limits to ten miles an hour throughout town, and we wouldn't really have a whole lot of impact on how people drive. As I understand, there was also a question as to whether or not there should be some sort of city-wide uniform speed limit. And that's an option for sure for the local streets. But it probably should be twenty-five miles per hour and not twenty. St. Louis County, for example, does not mark any residential county streets at lower than twenty-five miles per hour, unless those are school zones. West Bruno is probably the most difficult road in town to address. It has an identity crisis. That was the word I was looking for previously. Some people want it to be a local street. And from its alignment and location, other people use it as if it's a collector. And that hierarchy, the collector's street is supposed to collect traffic from multiple local streets and take it to the arterial streets. So it's a higher utilized roadway type. And on the collector, the speed limit should be, you know, thirty or thirty-five miles per hour. But you can still restrict the trucks at some point, you know, no trucks east of the Walmart driveways, for example. If it's a collector. If it's a local, you could completely restrict the trucks. And you may want to have part of the road be the collector handily to the Walmart driveway. The other part of the driveway be local, but that's really the decision to be made, because if we discuss what we should do before we discuss how it's supposed to function, then it'd be difficult to come to a reasonable set of recommendations. So that's really a big question for the city to answer, but you need to work with the city of Richmond Heights in order to answer that, because you have to treat the road on both sides in the same manner to be effective, in my opinion. So we had a lot of similar recommendations along West Bruno, also denoted in the report, where we treated west of the Walmart in one fashion and east of the Walmart in a much different fashion. Other recommendations that aren't really specific are for aggressive speeding. You only targeted enforcement based on the data that's in the report. We can tell you where those are. I'd be surprised if the police department doesn't already know where those are, based on, you know, their experience here in trying to both address traffic safety issues as well as the potential complaints that they feel, you know, getting calls from residents. Manchester Road enhancements were discussed, and I think that makes for a good future study, but the corridor probably needs to be looked at specifically. We provided some input on the Manchester Road corridor with, for instance, the idea of adding crosswalks, additional crosswalks along Manchester Road at safe and appropriate locations, in addition to the ones that are already there. And then pedestrian crossings also really set that aside for a future study. One of the primary reasons for that is the fact that that's a county route, and it would need to be coordinated with the county. And we need to study it in detail if we don't have their blessing or their interest in working with the city on certain or specific improvements. So as far as an action plan, you know, the first thing is, you know, does the city want to adopt the CBB recommendations, with or without revisions? And then that adoption of those recommendations allows the city staff to work towards setting priorities and scheduling implementation as the funding allows. Another thing that you can do is if these locations, some of them are near commercial sites or redevelopment projects, you could ask that the redevelopment take these into account and potentially help you to pay for those partially or fully. Then of course, as money becomes available, construction, which requires design plans, you want to make sure that the road will drain, and that will allow emergency vehicles to still move in and out. All those things need to be looked at in detail before we just start making changes. And then ultimately evaluating and monitoring over time to see, did those things that we changed on the road have the intended effect? One thing I will caution against is if we make one change on one road, you had a grid system, generally speaking, here in Maplewood. If you make one change on one road, I would expect that you would see a different change on a parallel road. So some of these things need to be taken into account comprehensively. Generally speaking, you have four quadrants of the city, divided Manchester Road and Big Bend, one, two, three, four. And as long as you're looking in the quadrant as a comprehensive, I think you'd be safe looking at those two. That's the end of my presentation. Sorry to be so long with that, but it was a relatively in-depth study, and I wanted to make sure that we represented it well for you here tonight for the public.
Thank you. Can I ask a couple of questions real quick? Yeah, so the first one about the raised intersection suggestion at Sutton. I'm having trouble thinking about how that works. Does it have any impact on accessibility for people with mobility issues, strollers, things like that, to cross the street there? Does it make it easier?
It actually would make it easier, yes, because instead of ramps for the sidewalk to go to meet the street, we bring the street up to meet the sidewalk, and the vehicles would ramp up. And so it's a lot easier for vehicles, because they're under power, to be able to make that ramp up. But those designs would need to be appropriate so that the pathways of those people would still be in the raised section of that raised intersection.
Well, thank you. And then the other question I had was about some of the recommendations on Rannells. So on that slide, it said parking on both sides of the street, and Matt and I were joking about that one. Does that mean, like, both sides, as in you're alternating which sides, or was the recommendation that literally both sides have parking all the way down?
Yeah, again, it would be a mixture of that in order to provide some ability for that courtesy gapping to occur. But in some sections, you would want parking on both sides. You need to look at the specific widths of the specific blocks, but it would be intended so that there would only be enough width for one vehicle to pass at a time in those chokepoint areas. The intent is to reduce the width, to reduce the comfort of the driver so that they slow down. But it'll be possible.
Yeah, because I mean, there's times now you can't, you have to wait for a car coming the other direction on Rannells, especially down towards the Cleet Station where the line of sight's kind of curvy. So that's why I was kind of like oof on that one. And then the other question I had about that is the Cleet Station floods down there where Rannells hits it. So I just am thinking about any recommendations we have that would potentially funnel more water or change the directional flow if we did bump outs or something. I don't know. I just want to make sure that that's something that we take into consideration.
Yes, as I mentioned with, you know, all of these recommendations needing to be, not necessarily designed in planned view, some of them are relatively simple, but they need to be fully thought through with things like that. You wouldn't want to create a curb that would allow water to get to where it needs to go. So there's ways that we do bump outs, for an example, with curbing, and allow breaking that curb so the water can still get in. All those things, all those details need to be considered before we would build anything.
Well, thank you.
Can you speak at all about the new effects this would have on like school buses? That's the biggest thing that I would see. So as far as some of those chicanes, as far as school buses being able to navigate around something like that, just in general, right? I know each street's going to have its own detail specific. Are the same with like the raised intersection? How does that, how do our buses handle that?
And to add on to that, yes, we would need to consider the school bus vehicle, and we would also want to consider emergency equipment. And generally speaking, those vehicles are single unit. They're not articulated. I don't believe Maplewood has articulated fire equipment. But they're straight chassis, and they're somewhere between thirty to forty-foot wheelbase vehicles. And again, that would need to be addressed through the design of these types of things. In some locales, the emergency response, folks don't like the speed humps or the raised intersections. There's another, basically, another way you can do the speed humps where you create breaks in those. They call those speed pillows. So basically, you have to go to the center of the road so that the wheels go in between the brakes in the speed humps. And so those types of things can be addressed as well. So, but none of these, these are implementation recommendations that have been put all over the country. Nothing's intended, you know, to damage vehicles. If you go too fast on any road and bad things happen. So, yeah, again, we would want to think through the design of anything before it got implemented. Again, just one of the primary issues in this study was to find out what issues concern the public, the residents of Maplewood. And are those perceptions real based on data or not? And some of them were, and some of them weren't. And we have recommendations that can address the ones that are real problems. You know, if the city chooses to do so, and again, depending on how much funding the city has, and as you make those decisions, yes, we want to do this, then the next step is to figure out what exactly is it that we do based on these recommendations. Great, thank you.
I think that's it.
All right.
Almost. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number twelve, please.
Sustainability Commission Report presented by Stephen Denson.
Hello.
Mayor and Council. Um the Sustainability Commission is busy at work. Uh we have uh I hope each of you received a summary of my report, okay? Uh just to hit the highlights, the primary activity is the completion of the Sustainability Plan. Uh turnover on the commission took away voices, so we now have new voices. We have an opportunity now to uh have a final draft and let it go through the process of review and approval. Uh the next issue, um I guess I would say will be accomplishment. Uh based upon activity and difference that we bring with. Uh we took a look at our composting ordinance. And it is presently working with Anthony, being reviewed and, I guess, processed for how it is going to be completed by council. But we thought it was important enough that we made it an item of interest for the commission. The Sustainability Consortium, I believe, last time I spoke, uh I mentioned that. Uh we're attempting to corral the the work of different municipalities in terms of their sustainability efforts. And we're attempting to identify them all. And after identifying them, we'll bring them in and sit down and try to have a uniform sustainability plan across the county. Uh the the county losses Sustainability Coordinator. Uh City of St. Louis didn't have one, we kind of worked with East West Gateway. However, uh those pieces have vanished, so we are doing it ourselves. And so I would, as I put in my recommend in my report, I would ask that uh consideration be given to uh fund uh some initial funding for when we bring together this group of individuals, we are identifying right now each city, each municipality to find out who has Sustainability Commission or something like it, if at all. And to uh bring them here to Maplewood uh to carry on a conference. So uh with that said, I just hit a couple of the highlights. And I will stand if you have any questions or anything that we have done or we have reported up to now.
Alderman Wreath, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirteen, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Aretha Moore to complete the unexpired term of Brandon Miller, who has resigned, as municipal judge of the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion?
Hearing a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-six is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fourteen, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Grant Match for grant identification and preparation services.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion?
Hearing a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven is approved.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, supporting the realignment of the Great River's Greenway Pedestrian Trail along Greenwood Boulevard from the north side of the street to the south side of the street, and the consolidation of the Great River's Greenway Pedestrian Trail Project and the City of Maplewood's reconstruction of Greenwood Boulevard Road Project.
That was a lot, thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion?
A motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion? Hearing a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number sixteen, please.
Bill number sixty-two thirty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, calling upon election in the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
That was the first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill number sixty-two thirty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, calling upon election in the City of Maplewood, Missouri.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Bill number sixty-two thirty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter two, administration, article four, administrative code, section two dash three twenty-six, city manager of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, to establish a pay range for the city manager.
That was the final reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Ordinance number six zero two eight is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen. Item number nineteen.
Council Communication.
Yeah, I'll uh um just a quick update um on the city manager process, everything's moving forward. Uh went to hear back from a few people, and then we'll kind of get the second part of the interview process done, so. And I'll I'll notify you guys when all that happens.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item twenty.
Mayor's Report.
Just a couple of things to report on. First Saturday in November, we'll have the uh Elder's Resource Affair, and that is from nine to one. That will be at the Early Childhood Center in Maplewood in the gym uh part. So it's easily accessible for anyone that has maybe a um wheelchair or walker. Easy, you could just walk in, so that will take place. And then from one to four in the afternoon, Maple Good is holding a um volunteer for elders. And so if there's anything that you need done around your house, or really, I think it's outside, like if you have any repairs that you've like done outside of your house, or if you like leaves raked, uh anything with burning in your yard, get some assistance from Maple Good the same day. And then I also want to give a shout out to the artist who drew the running t-shirt for um the uh Neighborhood Night Out. It's it's total lit. There's a nice little quote on it, I'm not sure my person's name, Mr. Nyber, do you know the winner's name?
I don't, but I will get that.
Okay, okay.
I guess I still present a whole nice whole world.
Okay, okay, well, please tell.
He was out, he was out of town.
We're very excited about this t-shirt. Um okay, and then finally, I just wanted to uh thank council again for agreeing to work in partnership with St. Louis Habitat for Humanity. They submitted an application for a grant from St. Louis County to work on housing, excuse me, affordable housing, and they were awarded two hundred thousand dollars from the county. And so um the contact that I have with the St. Louis Habitat for Humanity office let me know that they'd be able to work on four homes in the Maplewood area. So very excited about that, council. Thank you again for just being in support of ensuring that we are working in partnership with folks that want to see affordable housing in our community. And that concludes our report, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-one.
City Attorney's Report.
Thank you. Item twenty-two.
City Manager's Report.
I have nothing to report, mayor.
Thank you. Item number twenty-three.
Public Forum.
At this time, you are welcome to provide comments. If you're joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand, Mr. Nyber will call upon you. If you're joining us in the chambers, please step to the podium.
Mayor Knapper, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-four, may I have a motion to hold closed session to discuss contract matters and personnel matters?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
We are going to go into closed session now. Those joining us via Zoom, we will not return. Those joining us in the chambers, we will return, however, we're not sure when. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good night.